Call the city special council meeting of July fifteenth, twenty twenty to quarter at twelve fifteen. Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
Tom Baylor is absent. Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Jeff Gard.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
David Allison.
Here.
And David Gleason is absent. That's a form of council.
Okay, and council, I'm gonna add, and if there's no objection, I'm gonna add an item FF under pending agenda, just so council has a chance to discuss our next meeting time and so forth. It's not really a agenda action item, it's just an administrative addition, so is there any objection? Okay, hearing none, are there any other additions to the agenda, councilman? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda, I should say, is there anyone opposed to approving the agenda without additional items on it? Okay, hearing none, the agenda is approved. Does council have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications to disclose? Hearing none. We have here at the room, council, before we go to communications, we have city manager Helen Howarth, city clerk Susan Boujoua, have the public works director Sam Greenwood, and our finance director Ken and Jason Gabrielson on IT. There's no members of the public here in the audience. So, under communications, by petitions from visitors, guest speakers, do we have an incident management team report?
Oh, this is Paul, we do not have one right now.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Council, do you have any questions of incident command? Okay, hearing none. There is opportunity for audience comments regarding agenda items. That number again is two five three six two zero two. If you'd like to call and make any comments on agenda items. We'll go ahead and proceed with staff reports while we wait to see if there are any audience comments on agenda items coming in. We haven't had any last couple of special meetings, so. Have a staff report. Manager Howarth.
I just wanna chat a little bit about what happened last week. We did have our first positive community case, and that positive community case was centered in City Hall, and I really wanna reach out and thank everyone for participating in that exercise. I think it was good that City Hall was impacted rather than a business locally that might have been shut down. We did close for three days just to make sure we had the time to kind of get ourselves together, give staff an opportunity to feel safe and get tested, and then we cleaned the offices over the weekend very thoroughly. We included infrared treatments, carpet cleanings, everything. So, we're back in business, and I just wanted to share that with everyone that we followed the health directives of both the state and our local medical team, and now all of us, with the exception of the individual who is COVID positive, we are all safe to return to work and participate in the community. I wanna defer to Sam, who has something to report. It's, I think, it's in your packet, there's an HVAC system report. That was one of the requests of council to really evaluate our systems here, HVAC systems here, to make sure that we were up to standards with air replacement and other things in this building, and I think that report is clear. But if you have any questions, Sam is here and can answer those questions. And that pretty much is it. I also wanna really give a shout out to the community. Kudos to the Canaries. They have been amazing in terms of keeping us safe from COVID. We had a couple of early cases and have had nothing to report since then, while other communities throughout the state are seeing pretty significant numbers of local cases through their seafood processing industries. So, our team here is doing a fabulous job, and I really wanna have all of us acknowledge that and give thanks to our Canary partners. Any questions of Sam or the HVAC system? We have Copeland, Sherman.
Councilman Sherman.
Thank you. And last really question, I guess, I'm really, the HVAC report was kind of interesting, and I enjoyed it, taking it, and I love it a lot. But I also, just wanted to ask that, I talked to Malvin earlier today, so I understand that the police and fire department, Gil, City Hall building, will also be having a HVAC looked at, and I was wondering, I think the Darky school, and that's kind of a long question, but what about the schools and other facilities in our community? Are they having similar testing or recording? Opened.
I don't know, I can't answer that. I could maybe check in with the schools.
Yeah, okay, Sam, I was just curious, I wanted to just make sure we were treating all our facilities while the country could.
Yeah, both with Darky and the police, public safety building are old, and so they don't have the abilities that we do at the Cordova Center. Although Malvin has thought about and talked with Alex about potential ideas for those buildings as well.
I do wanna.
This is great, thank you.
I can reassure you that the hospital is looking at all their systems, and the school district having its own operating procedures and everything is evaluating how they're gonna safely bring kids back to school, and I know that includes facility issues. So, they're looking at that, but we as city haven't addressed those directly with the school district or with the hospital.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Okay, I just wanna add, before I go on with further questions, Dr. Sanders is on the line and available for questions. As manager said, CCMC has been looking at their HVAC system and particularly UV treatment in the area for COVID-related items. So, council, are there other questions of public works or city manager or the staff reports? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business and new business. We haven't had any audience calls. So, emergency ordinance one one nine zero is an emergency ordinance of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, continuing the city's declaration of a local emergency and acknowledgement of a statewide emergency resulting from COVID-19, adopting the city of Cordova COVID-19 Health Advisory Plan and ratifying emergency order two zero two zero dash zero nine. What is the will of council?
Mayor Copeland, this is Sherman.
Councilman Sherman.
They move to adopt.
Here we have a motion to adopt.
This is only our opinion.
And we have a second, Vice Mayor Meyer. Councilman Sherman, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, I just am comfortable with this at this time after knowing that the specific man has worked with the city to review and update our plan, and I have favor of adopting it.
Vice Mayor Meyer, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, I would do, like, I know, um, but some of the people said, um, now I have that you said, man, who wants to be there doing doctor's thing instead. I don't know if there's anybody in the room that wants to, um, kind of speak to those changes or that part of the thing, man, who, that I just have to be helpful to, I just, I experienced somebody I can.
Okay, noted. Councilman Baylor is absent. Manager Howarth, would you like to or be able to just give a brief overview of what the changes are?
Sure, the only change is now we have a health alert system. I'm gonna let Paul speak to it, but as you all know, council has agreed to go with the state's green, yellow, red, uh, system of evaluating local or statewide health issues. On page thirty-five is our coding system, and just so you know, the green, yellow, red is still there. Numbers one, three, and five are, excuse me, levels one, yeah, three and six, no, five, are the state plans, and where we deviate is levels two and four, and I'll let Paul speak to that.
Yeah, thank you. So, we've created the different levels. The state has the three, green, yellow, and red, but that doesn't do anything for local communities like Cordova. When we have medical issues, the state doesn't stand up and say, okay, this is what you should be doing. We come up with our own agendas, and so we've created the five level step. And as you can see on page thirty-five of the council packet, level one is open. There's no restrictions, no mandates. We are like two thousand nineteen, everything is monkey-dory. As we move into level two, this is advisory, kind of like our tsunami and earthquake warnings, where we are paying attention to what's going on, and again, this is all medically driven, and in the packet you can see that there are the different steps that the state has for us to go by. As we move into level three, a watch, this is where we kind of were at the beginning of last week after Fourth of July, where the medical staff was inundated with testing, and we could have potentially moved into a level three and asked the state for more equipment, more PPE, more testing capabilities, but we really weren't there just yet. And then as we move into the level four, the warning, we are moving into like what we call the state's red. And so, what, basically what this gives the community, the city manager, city council, is a way to ask the state for us to move into this outbreak warning, which consists of rapid increases in cases, and we can't control what's going on. We never wanna move into a level five. What this gives the community is an idea that, okay, if we move into a level three, it does state that we are going to prepare the community for possibly closing public spaces, and this lets city rule the mandates. If we had to do that, and we would outstate that we would move into a level four where we cannot control an outbreak in Cordova, and that does give the city council the tools to use, and the city manager the tools to use to do that. If we ever had to go into a level five, that's the ultimate worst-case scenario. So, this is kind of gives the community an idea that if we're in an advisory, okay, kind of cool, we're just doing what we're doing. We do have mask mandate, a mask rule, and we do have some travel restrictions, but not necessarily having this management team ramp up is still a medically-based scenario. If we didn't move into the level three, this is where the community would really have to pay attention to what's going on and listen to the city council, the city manager, and also the medical team, that we really do need to pay attention to what's going on. And then we just continue to move through, but also gives us a chance to step back, and we can't go into a level two at any time. And whenever we do move into a level one, that's gonna be, you know, probably from the state perspective, the medical team's perspective, as to what does that mean, and can we open up travel restrictions, and do we remove the mask mandates and things like that. So, it's there for the public to see, and it's also there for, it's, this document will go into our emergency operation plan at some point. We're trying to revive that a little bit, but again, this is just COVID-19 based, and so if they have any questions here.
Councilman Vice Mayor Meyer, does that, does that answer your question, or your requests for an overview of the changes?
Yeah, I think that was great. I think it's good for this document and the public to sort of get a rundown, direct to work. Let's say, Sam, just think about the changes from level. Thank you.
Okay, manager Howarth had something to add as well.
I just wanna let everyone know that because council agreed to go with the state, we just needed a mechanism to both identify community as well as to communicate to the state under which we might deviate from what the state is asking of us. So, this clearly articulates exactly under what conditions we might make a change to a local-driven response rather than following the state mandate. So, this is a real helpful document, I think, for everyone.
That keeps us on good legal footing if we have.
Yeah, yeah, so if we need to, we can go to the state and say, these are the reasons why we are deviating from what the state is requiring at this moment in time, and this is the rationale, and this ordinance allows us to do that.
So, I'll continue with discussion on the motion, and you can incorporate any questions you have for the incident team regarding changes there, and I'll just go down my list here. Councilman Gard.
I can support this. It's a, it's in line with the state, which makes some things easier to function, but gives us off ramps if we have thirteen or I want scenarios in the future in Cordova, so I can support this.
Okay. Councilman Schaefer.
She texted me that she's been driving, and she's here.
I'm back on. My phone keeps kicking me off, so I'll keep your company at some point. I'll try to reconnect. But, yeah, I, I'm in support of this. I like the metrics for each level. Yeah, clearly defined, easy to understand, they're medically based, but they're also tailored to Cordova. Yeah, the statewide metrics don't necessarily work for our population size and the type of medical services that we have here, so I think it is helpful for the command team and our medical staff and the community, and I can support this.
Councilman Allison.
Yeah, I don't think it's any secret of my opinion on whether or not we're, well, I think we've been preparing for emergency. I think we're probably now prepared for emergency. I just don't see us in an emergency this point in time, but maybe my emergency definition is different than most. However, that said, I'm gonna support the motion because I understand that what politics work, and funding works, and resource allocation works, both the state and the feds. I think we need to do this. My only, my only concern, which doesn't have to be dealt with right now, is the, I would like to see us somehow write in here that the schools will determine mask use at grade of school. You know, whether or not it's appropriate, you know, I think for some grades it probably is. My secondary year, you'll be standing all day trying to keep it off the ground, so. I think I would just assume have the school deal with that as far as, you know, I don't know if, maybe it's allowed or anything with our mask mandate. But anyway, since this goes till August thirty-first or something like that, the school starts before that, so I would like to see us before that time, that work with the schools and make sure that they're good with what got mandated there. So, other than that, you know, I think the extra levels are fine. I support the motion, but I'd like to see us look at the mask thing for the schools.
Councilman Allison, if there's no objection from council, and I had this thought a little earlier on the agenda regarding the citizen calling in, to just have the clerk reach out to school board representative, I guess, to get a report from, on our next meeting, from the school board representative on where they're at in their planning process and what their thoughts are to date on their reopening process for schools or for schools' fault for council.
Mr. Mayor, this is, Mr. Troubler.
Paul.
Yes, I believe we understand that the school board and the school leader will have another conversation, I believe, July twenty-fifth, to discuss opening the schools. I know Heather Renn has been in contact with them, and so we're, they'll definitely have something to report, I would say, after the twenty-fifth of July.
Okay, great, thank you. Was that all of your comments to the motion, Councilman Allison?
Yeah, that's my, I'd like to see us get a report for the next, whatever that is, I don't know. Whenever our next meeting is after the twenty-fifth, after they have chance, let them know that we're interested in hearing their thoughts, sharing thoughts back to board, so, thank you.
Okay, the clerk's captured that, so, Councilman Gleason.
It's not on.
Is absent. So, I'm gonna circle back to Councilman Sherman to see if she had any additional comments after the overview or discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Copeland. I appreciate the explanation, Paul, and I think this is a really understandable document, and it would be great to get out to the public, and I'm just pleased with that, and I think it will stand through the next few months or weeks, whatever this is gonna be. So, I'm in favor of it, and it gives us some good guidance, always good advice, so, thank you.
So, I think I've heard all of council in support of the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Schaefer.
Councilman Schaefer.
Just for purposes of clarity, right now, we are being on level two according to the, the new work file.
That's what we, this, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's kind of where we think we're at right now, is at a level two advisory. And like I said, up here after July fourth, we were kind of hovering between level two and level three because of the testing capacity of the hospital.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Jeff Gard.
Yes.
Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
Melina Meyer.
Yes.
David Allison.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
And Gleason and Baylor are absent. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The next item, council, is council approval of CARES-funded purchases of portable restroom units.
Will they approve?
Is that Councilman Gleason?
Allison.
Allison.
Allison, sorry. Councilman Allison, move to approve?
Second, Sherman.
A second, Sherman. Have a motion, a second, to approve the CARES-funded purchase of portable restroom units. Councilman Allison, would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh, yeah, I might make a little bit of a report on, on, well, I guess, I can, I think we need to, we need to, we can use that in several places around town, whether the camper park, the basketball court, I'm not sure. Are we still looking at possibly plumbing in permanent water to each of those spots? Would be one concern or one question, and I know that eventually that is the goal, and it's certainly a concern if we move somewhere else, but in the meantime, I'm not sure about this lean-to or whatever. I think we need to be sure that we're protecting good and able to winterize appropriately, so. Anyway, I guess my question was on the, on the permanent water sewer down there.
Manager Howarth?
I'm gonna defer to Sam.
Okay, so, the long-term plan for ODI at Camper Park is to expand and move the bathhouse out in the middle of the camping area. So, when we talk through this project, if we went and did electrical, I mean, sorry, water and sewer to all the existing sites, we'd kind of be tearing that back out when the money boat comes in, when we get to redo the campground. So, we're trying to incorporate the long-term range plan into this concept as well, which is why it would be moved to where it is. And it also then allows the Field of Dreams and the multi-use field to access wash stations, which is also another long-term goal of the ODI park, camper. Eventually, the entire playground would be moved around to that area as well. So, no, we, right now, with COVID care money, we are not considering permanently water and sewer to the existing camping sites. The idea is to make this work until we can redesign the entire area and then use it elsewhere.
Does that answer your question, Councilman Allison? Or Jeff, any follow-up?
Yes, thank you, Sam. Are we still looking at other restroom facilities around the town and remodeling the one at the Kid's Park? Or what?
Yeah, so, yeah, so right now, I'm working on the RFP, and on that list is a restroom at the Shipyard Facility, upgrading the snack shack, baseball field restrooms to more cleanable and touchless, cleanable surfaces and touchless bathroom things. And, let's see, that.
Navada Park?
Nope, Navada's off the table.
The fish, fish cleaning station, no.
Waiting for a bid on the hand, permanent hand washing stations in the harbor. I'm drawing a blank, and I know there's a little more project in there. I can send out an email to city council on the RFP because I'm drawing a blank on that very big project.
No problem, thinking now. One, one comment to get for the RFP, make sure the door for that snack shack building are replaced so the kids can get in and out.
They're very heavy doors, for some reason.
Well, I think the logic behind the heavy doors is the wind issues at that area, and at least when I was speaking with Micah and Suzie.
Yeah, I understand, because if they have to be heavy, they have to be heavy, but there's gotta be a better way to open them. The kid, my seven-year-old can't open, close those doors, so.
Okay.
Still, it's a little bit hard for them.
I will talk to Micah and Suzie, and we'll figure it out.
So, council, while Sam's giving a report, Councilman Baylor did have a couple of comments or questions he asked me to, and they've been largely answered. I think one was status of hand washing stations in the harbor, upgrading fishing, cleaning stations, the hand washing. Also, some questions or comments on the portable restroom facility at the Bedarky to consider roofing and/or insulation and a pad there, and I mentioned that to manager Howarth, and I think those are in the RFP. And then the final item was to think ahead to if testing is gonna, and ambassadors and whatnot. testing is gonna, and ambassadors and whatnot are gonna be out of the airport on into winter, that that might be an item for consideration, but that's under the CARES Act funding. That isn't really directly related to this motion, so. So, would you like to speak to your second, Councilman Sherman?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Colwell. I'm in favor of this, and I like hearing that we're kind of developing long-term plans and goals and using the CARES funding to our advantage at this time. I didn't want to hurry up and make rash decisions and throw out the long-term plan, so it's nice to hear we're kind of combining all that, and I'm in favor of the purchase.
So I'll just go through order of council for discussion. Councilman Schaefer.
Yeah, my only questions I have are related to how this fitting with the potential redesign of the camper park at some point. So, thank you for answering those, Sam, and yeah, I'm in favor. Once we don't need a better camper park anymore, we'll definitely be able to find a spot to do that downtown.
Okay, Councilman Baylor is absent. Vice Mayor Meyer.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this trailer, restroom showers, portable. I actually headed a campground last summer in Canada, that had one pretty similar to this, and that stuff looked really good at the bottom. I think it was very nice to support you with one, and it was like a weekly train, and I think you could use it other places too, so I'm definitely in favor of it. You said it, and it came long-term, and we did it in other spaces later on. I'm in favor.
Councilman Dern.
I'm also in favor, and I think it's a good interim plan that leaves us plenty of flexibility with the asset after it's no longer needed in its personal. Anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, Councilman Blaisen is absent. I think all of council have spoken in favor of the motion. Is there any further discussion? There are none. A roll call vote, please.
David Allison.
Yes.
Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
David Blaisen is absent. Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Melina Meyer.
Yes.
Tom Baylor is absent. Jeff Gard.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, council, the next item is discussion of COVID-19 emergency response, and before we open that discussion, I'd like to preface that, Mr. Troubler, if you could give us just an update on the dashboard of what the status of the community cases and out-of-town cases currently are, if there's any new cases.
There are no new cases. We've had some recovered cases, so we have now gone, our last reported case was last Thursday, so we are almost a week with zero cases, so there is some concern that we may still see some cases coming through after the Fourth of July weekend, but with every passing day, that number and that possibility gets lower and lower, so let's keep our fingers crossed.
Actually, we've actually dropped one of our local residents from a positive to a recovered. So, we're doing really well, and, you know, last, the Fourth of July kind of threw us through, threw us for a loop, but right now, we're doing really, really well.
Okay, thank you. So, council, I just opened up for a discussion of COVID-19 emergency response, and I'll just go through the list of council here. Vice Mayor Meyer.
Yeah. With the new community cases that we've had, it's great to hear that one of them has already come recovered, and I know that the updates on the sort of the radio briefings have been very informative, so thank you to everyone that has been taking that, and very repulsive, so, so on YouTube, if you haven't heard of them, and listen to the factoring, and that just about everybody, a different day, talking about situations. I guess what I'm seeing for first instruction would be for businesses with the community spaces. I know last week when they, oh my God!
So, it sounds like someone may be unmuted, because we're getting some noises interjected there, but I just missed the last, the tail end of that. Councilman Meyer, what was your question?
Oh, it's just about businesses. Since last week, I know that there's a lot of care going on with community spaces, and is there any kind of good mechanism that we can help businesses kind of navigate through that, you know? At least, for me, I'm, I've been helping managing the rehab desk, I have a lot of employees calling morning to take home, leave, call, and it's not signing. It was just hard to navigate, because I'm sure most businesses are having that kind of uncertainty too, but I don't know if there's anything that we can do about that, but I want to go and ask people some more.
So, I'll defer that to Manager Howard, if she'd like to, I guess, share thoughts on businesses, and then just remind that we have Dr. Sanders and Mr. Troubler online, if you'd just like some general feedback on their thoughts on, you know, businesses operating now.
This is Helen, and I, I think one of the most important lessons that I've learned about this isn't managing the disease, it's managing the public's perception of the disease and the public's response to the disease. And I think last week was a really good example. We had our first community case, we knew quickly that it was a member of City Hall, but the word got out almost before we could even talk about it amongst ourselves, not almost before, definitely before. And it wasn't long before people in the community were telling City Hall what they thought that we as, as residents and citizens should be doing. And I, I think where we all need to go, and there's certainly a lot of information, and certainly Dr. Sanders has been more than generous in giving guidance and advice to the business community, but we all have to be mindful of what the best practice is, what the science is saying, and what we as individuals then need to do to respond appropriately. So, it's hard to manage people's fears, but I think if we're all consistent in our approach and follow the guidelines that have been set out, not only by the state, but the guidelines set out by incident command team and the medical team, we will protect our community and we'll be okay. Where we won't be okay is when people are telling you that you should be hunkered down in your house when you've been given no guidance to do that, and we start getting into thems and uses, and it's complicated, and I know we as staff all experienced that last week, so. To those in the business community who are struggling with their employees, we have tremendous resources, we would be happy to come talk to businesses, share information, whatever it is, to help stem the tide of anxiety and also make sure that we're being consistent in our approaches.
Thank you. Dr. Sanders, would you like to add to that?
No, that is the message. I mean, it's very difficult, none of us have really clear guidance to be able to calm the fears when we have them, when we're starting to have community cases, because when we see a glimpse of what's going on, it's always kind of what we're seeing is actually that two-week look back, so every day is a new adventure with this. I think what we've seen these two weeks, I'm really hopeful that people have been following the guidelines, and we can take a sigh of relief, but we're not quite there to that point to say that yet. So it's just gonna be a challenge to learn how to operate, but it's huge unknown.
Well, thank you, Dr. Sanders, and I want to take an opportunity to thank you on behalf of council for calling into these meetings and for your constant diligence and communications and working not only the pandemic, but also improvements and upgrades, both short-term for the pandemic and longer-term at CCMC. Vice Mayor Meyer, does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I just thought it was good to, I was very open meeting a little bit, and also the progress that contains Dr. Sanders, and he's been a big help, I reached out to her a couple times, and it's been really helpful, and I hope that other businesses and community members can kind of know the resources that we do have, and understand that it is very hard to navigate and people's fears. It's a hard time, and there's a lot of times that it's hard to be also positive. Just want to reiterate your recommendation. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and then just to reiterate City Manager Howard's comment, as mayor, I get a lot of those rumors flying at me as well. Everything from sixteen new cases in the Coast Guard to people confirming positive cases wandering all over the community and not following any of the rules. And yet, we know that they would have, they wouldn't even know if they were positive, they hadn't been tested and would have showed up as one of the positive tests, so unfortunately, those rumors and misinformation don't help businesses with their concerns, so. So continuing discussion on COVID-19 emergency response. Councilman Allison.
Yeah, none of my questions are, it's like to thank the management team and our manager Howard, our staff, our city hall, and those scary time last week, but made it through that, that is, but hopefully we can avoid any more, but thanks for the excellent job everybody's doing, Dr. Sanders, Paul, Heather, and PIO Sherman. Everybody's doing a great job, thank you.
Councilman Sherman.
Sure, yeah, everybody, this meeting, the 19 meetings, are very encouraging because it's an active group of volunteers who are really dedicated to making sure communities stay safe, and we can hear that in every single meeting. I always thinking of, with my PIO hat, and I think of my mayor, mayor has some great ideas there, so I will try and both the next E news, COVID E news, maybe with business here at the site, and I know part of those, I'm telling you, it's also just bits from watching some really great information, so I'm gonna try and work that in as well. And, no, I think my reality check today with COVID was, you know, we need to start looking long-term, what we're gonna be doing with schools, as Mr. Allison mentioned, and airports and scary and checks, and I, you know, we probably just have to go one way at a time, and see where testing and cases, but need to think to have a little bit here, thank you.
And Councilman Blaisen is absent. Councilman Dern.
Yeah, thank you. I guess this question would either be for Dr. Sanders or or Robles. All departments, we had already moved a lot of our local cases from active to recuperate. Were we doing a time-based or testing-based matrix for that for ascertaining recovery?
Councilman Dern, I'm gonna direct that question to Dr. Sanders.
So, we're working really closely with the state, with the public health nurses and the contact tracers when we are managing these cases. Sometimes, depending on the industry at key, or depending on the specific case, we will use a test-based strategy. Sometimes, we will use a time-based strategy. Most commonly, is a time-based strategy. So, we won't be releasing information regarding individuals specifically in which cases we're doing what strategy, but there is some reasoning behind those decisions, and we're giving close contact with the state epidemiologists and having them guide us.
Dr. Sanders, could I ask for a little further clarification? So on a time-based strategy, does that include a testing element, like a certain amount of time after a negative test, or?
So, the time-based strategy is you have a positive test, and you are an asymptomatic individual, and so that test of cotton screening, you will be in isolation quarantine for ten days. During those ten days, you monitor for any symptoms. If you develop symptoms, then your time is changed from that ten day. For an individual that tests positive and has symptoms, then they have to wait for seventy-two hours of complete symptom resolution. That includes no fever without taking any Tylenol, no headaches without taking Tylenol, and after those seventy-two hours, then they are considered recovered. Depending on the industry, we will go to a test-based strategy, and the determination to test depends on whether people are symptomatic or asymptomatic. With the test-based strategy, regardless of if you are symptomatic or not, we would have somebody test negative, two different negative tests twenty-four hours apart for them to be considered recovered.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Councilman Dern?
That answers one, thank you. My other one was on the state matrix of no more than two positive tests per thousand in veterinary. I don't quite understand how that formula works, because nobody listens and talks about the level of testing you're doing, what percentage of the populace you're testing. So, because somebody could count upon that a little bit more, so I had a better understanding and appreciate it.
Dr. Sanders.
Those exact calculations that have led a large population for the epidemiologists to see this is the number for these large populations, they're certainly looking at the number of tests that are being completed and making wins and promotions. Those numbers aren't applicable to small communities, because, well, it's pretty obvious, you can't look at anything per number of thousand people here, or, and those numbers just won't make sense in our community, so we are more looking at the types of cases and their supplies and the burden on our healthcare system to determine our risk during COVID-19.
Do we have any percentage level of the community we like to have for testing? You know, if we can tell ten percent of the population, or five percent, or fifty percent, is there some level that matters, makes sense?
Right now, you know, this is, as we all know, this is brand new, so, but we are testing at a level in this community that exceeds what other communities are testing. So I feel really comfortable with where we're at. I don't think that we need to say that we are going to reach a certain specific number, because we're exceeding any number that any epidemiologist would suggest that we need to have.
Okay. I guess that's why we're gonna know about that. And I understand that it's a, a great new world, but we're trying to sort of this stuff out, and we haven't dealt with it before. So thanks very much for answering my question, I appreciate it.
Under test, we have, you know, our population size, some of those are certain UVP tests. There's certainly a small percentage that are those repeat, so our, our tests that we've conducted in this community are, that numbers are very high. The state has given us before, we've been able to get resupplied on tests, we're just trying to make sure that we use the cartridges for the point of care or the local testing that we can do, that we're appropriately using them, so that our other partners, the both state and federal, feel like we are using the supplies appropriately and continue to know that we're going to fully utilize the stuff that they give us and not just keep it. So, I think we're doing a good job of that, and we continue to get excellent support from the state and federal level.
I was never trying to say we weren't doing an excellent job on the whole, but I'm very proud of what we've been able to do here. I was just trying to understand some of the science behind this, and I guess be understanding the science maybe is the most possible to start with, but. how possible you'd start with. But anyway, thank you very much. And it was, the question was not all in this on what was going on, just try to better understand some of the testing matrix that may be out there. And I now understand that there's more to that than rules for it. So thanks very much.
And I didn't, I didn't miss any shit. I didn't feel any dis, and no worries. Thank you.
Um, further, um, emergency response, um, comments, Councilman Dern?
No, that's got me covered. Thank you very much.
Councilman Schaefer?
Hi, thank you. Um, yeah, I'd also like to reiterate all the thank yous that went around to Helen and the management team, city staff, and, um, PIO Sherman. Um, it was a relief to hear that everyone, uh, at City Hall was healthy after all the testing last week. And, um, I hope this staff member who was positive is doing okay. Um, my only question that I have, I think, right now is, um, I really like the layout of the new layout of the, uh, dashboard on the city website, the COVID dashboard. Um, but the number of tests conducted and our testing capacity is no longer listed. And so I was just wondering if there was a reason, just a reason for this. And also, what our supply chain is like if we do any more tests. So after last week, I'm sure there were a lot of tests, testing that was done in response to, to, um, having some community spread cases. And if that happened again and we go through a bunch of tests, do we have that, do we feel confident about our access to more tests, if needed?
Do you think I'll drag the dashboard question to Mr. Trubley? Or to Helen, Dr. Sanders, and, and then also curtail the question on testing capacity?
Yeah, for the dashboard, um, it was the medical team's, um, advice not to boast those. They just couldn't keep up with the active, um, numbers that they were doing, um, and the amount of tests coming in and out, um, the amount of, uh, testing capability they have. It was just so hard for them to keep up on that. And so we just decided to remove that. But no, to the community that we do have enough, uh, enough test kits to do what we need to do. And we do have that supply chain through the state of Alaska, um, to get more tests if we need them.
Uh, Dr. Sanders?
Um, yeah, it, it, I'll concur with what Paul said. Um, we have our supply chain in terms of getting tests for kids that we can process here is decent. We always also have access to multiple sources for send-out testing. The tests take longer to result, but we do have that access. We will continue to balance use of all different types of tests in order to try to keep enough local resources here to manage any outbreaks that come over next year. Um, we never know with supply chain what's going to happen right now. Um, it's, it's just too unpredictable and manufacturing and trying really hard to keep up, but the entire country needs these tests right now. In terms of the testing reporting, it's a humongous feat to go from a hospital as small as we are with the number of employees that we have and try to ramp up testing and capacity that we have. Um, keeping the reporting to the dashboard accurate and timely is a lot of work. And to some of those areas, although I know it feels really important to the community, um, it isn't, it doesn't, it's not something that we have to report to the state. It doesn't, it's not any part of any of our reporting. And it was just creating an additional burden for counting and making sure that we're keeping this accurate. And so we determined that because we don't feel that it increases the, increases the safety for the community, we're going to stop reporting on that data. Um, when you, when we do test, some of them are repeat tests. Some groups of businesses were testing every two weeks. And so looking, having the community know those numbers, but not understanding the difference between the groups and who we're actually testing, it, it doesn't provide, um, any actual information. That was why we took that away.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Councilman Schaefer?
Can I have one more thing?
Please do.
I think everybody's been so much weight on this testing. And it's so important to understand that these tests, when we test your contact too early, or when somebody gets a negative test result, it only means that at that moment in time, the individual was not shedding virus in their oral capacity. It, it doesn't actually even mean that the person doesn't have COVID. It doesn't mean that they're not at risk for coming down with COVID in the next couple of days. So testing is a really valuable tool. And it's hard because this is the only thing that we have here. But I just really encourage people to, um, remember that the tools are all the other guidelines and being cautious in our behaviors and not getting too focused on tests and negative test results. Um, because they give a little bit of information. Sometimes having a negative result for the wrong person that is going to come down with COVID the next day can actually be dangerous. So it's a tool and it is important, but really everybody's behaviors are more important.
Okay, thank you, uh, for that additional clarification and reminder. Uh, Councilman Schaefer, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that is my question. I think it was good just to have the community that understands, you know, what the numbers been and why the dashboard changed and whatnot. So excellent.
Okay. Did you have, um, further, uh, comments or discussion on the emergency response?
No.
Okay, Council, I think, uh, Councilman Sherman articulated the two, uh, takeaways that I flagged. Uh, one, um, I think feedback to the incident management team. Uh, the council would like to be looking at, uh, uh, looking ahead at the airport and, uh, winter accommodations if they're necessary. And then also to get a report back from the school after their July twenty-fifth, on some clarification on what their thoughts are for school as well. And we may have a problem with the, uh, YouTube.
Yeah, it looks like we dropped our stream.
Okay. There's been internet, um, outages all during the day, so. So, Council, we did lose our YouTube stream. And we'll just, uh, keep posted and try to restore that, I guess, before we get to, um, audience comments. So is there other discussion on this item, Council? Okay, so we got those two takeaways. And, um, thank you again, Dr. Sanders. So, uh, now we'll move on to pending agenda, uh, that we added to the agenda. And I guess our first discussion item would be our next meeting.
So our next regular should be August fifth, which there's, that's three weeks between.
Yeah.
So I don't know if Helen or staff has anything they know or ready to need a special for. But maybe we'll just, um...
Just plan on having that regular meeting, though we should, right? Because we should have the, yeah.
And there will be, there could very well be COVID items on it, even though it's a regular meeting, because, you know, they'll come up. I guess if anything time-sensitive comes up in between, uh, we'll be in touch with Council and we can have a special if we need to.
Okay, Council, so we do have our August fifth regular meeting scheduled. If an item came up that was time-critical and did need a special meeting, we could call that. Um, and then so on the August fifth, uh, the school board will have met. So we'll request them to specifically in their report, uh, kind of give Council an overview of their plans for school this fall. Uh, any other pending agenda items? I'll just mention, uh, since I don't have a mayor's report here, been in informal discussions with Fisher Game regarding, uh, the closures and kind of reaching out on behalf of Fisher. Would have been contacted me to kind of try to get some clarification on the management right now with so many commercial closures, but Upriver being left open. Got a lot of information back from the department and, and hoping that, um, um, to see if you also got a call from, uh, the mayor's assistant, John Muller, in fisheries yesterday. Uh, he really applauded Cordova for our, uh, response, uh, to pandemic, but also our engagement in, in fisheries and, and executing, uh, our business on behalf of the state. Um, also the Kenne Cots been canceled for the Monday sailing. So been reaching out to AMHS, trying to reiterate that's, that's one of the only six sailings we've had, uh, that we have scheduled. So a little frustrating in that regard. So, um, also we got thank yous back from Senator Solomon and Senator Murkowski on the copper raking exam that we, um, gave to them for appreciation, for their support through the pandemic. Um, so I just wanted to interject those items. Uh, any other pending agenda items? Okay, hearing none. We'll plan on, uh, August fifth regular meeting. And we'll, uh, do we have our YouTube? So we've lost our YouTube, but we have, as I mentioned, we've been having internet outages. So, um, we won't be able to take audience comments, uh, participation. Uh, so, uh, they did have a chance to speak to the agenda items, though, which is important. So I'll go through the list for council comments. Uh, Councilman Allison?
Over the comments. Thank you.
Councilman Sherman?
Um, no comments. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, I know there's a couple people in the community right now that are, um, feeling self-explanatory, starting to suspect they're positive. Um, I've heard a lot of this before, some of them getting, getting support from the community and some, um, people may be getting, um, not so fine comments, you know, people that have, have been positive. And I just wanted to say that, you know, this really could happen to anybody getting a positive test, um, who may agree or disagree and have a plan to, that's what that's, that's good or what we believe. But I do have confidence that they have, um, in contact with doctors and professionals about how to handle it. And, um, you may have done something differently, but, uh, it's really could happen to anybody. And I just wanted to say a lot of, um, love and support out there to, 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 to what they're going through in their head. And, um, it's really could happen. And, and I don't want people to have to think, you know, like, you know, I just need a support panel for, um, if they are getting, getting, that's not right. It really could happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Meyer. And just to, um, reiterate, all three of the community cases were voluntary. They were not, um, they had a rebuttal to caution and, um, uh, basically as a courtesy of the community, when they got tested, we're surprised. So yes, be calm, be cautious, and be kind. Uh, Councilman Baylor is absent. Uh, Councilman Dern, council comments?
No further comments. Thank you.
Councilman Schaefer?
Yeah, I also just wanted to encourage everyone to feel compassionate and understanding of our neighbors and community members as possible, um, while getting through this as fast as we can. And Cordova's been a really good doc to part. Um, keep wearing your mask, keep washing your hands, keep your social bubble small, and also make sure you're getting your information from, versus a reputable source. So, thank you.
Okay. And Councilman Blaisen is absent. Uh, so we don't have an executive session scheduled. So we have one remaining item. And is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none or adjourned?